I'd like to call the, um, meeting of the Riverton City Council Finance Committee, or May 5th, to order, um, do I have a motion for the consideration of claims?
Your Honor, I make a motion to pay an amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, and checks written for payroll and liabilities for, seventeen, amount of four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents, manual checks for the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents, for a total amount of six hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there, is there any discussion on any of the bills today? Please?
Um, are we on water, uh, on river water now?
Mr. Chairman, startup was May 1st, and so the treatment plant just started a couple days ago.
I noticed that there was close to a hundred thousand dollars in water parts.
Yeah, startup, um, has been a little bit more complicated because of our new pieces of equipment, and then we've noticed some of our older pieces giving us trouble.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, anything? All right, and I didn't have anything either, everything looks good to me, so, yes, all in favor of the approval of claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, um, no other business tonight, Stephen?
Your Honor, no, just a reminder of our meeting tomorrow that we have at noon.
Noon till one, and it's gonna be, where is it gonna be?
It'll be in that room, right back here. It won't be televised, it's just, it's more of a just thing for the finance committee and...
Twelve o'clock sharp.
Twelve o'clock sharp. Is that gonna work for you? Cause you typically can't make it till twelve fifteen?
It should, I, I will do my best. If I'm a couple minutes late, you can begin, and I will catch up as fast as I can. So, I guess, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.
I, uh, now call the, um, May 5th meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven oh two, um, PM. Would Councilmember Martinez lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and if we could remain standing after that, Jonathan Fabian will give us an indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, we thank you for the opportunity to serve as elected officials for the city of Riverton. I ask, Lord, that you would allow us to make sound decisions that are truly for the betterment of our city. God, we, we do appreciate the, the privilege it is to be in a position of leadership, and ask that you will strengthen us in our service.
Amen. Would the, uh, city clerk please, uh, conduct the roll call? Are you gonna, maybe you're gonna do that, Stephen?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, Councilmember Bailey?
Here.
Councilman Canaan?
Here.
Councilman Fabian?
Here.
Councilman Martinez?
Here.
Councilman Larson?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibbon?
Here.
And John Lars Baker?
Thank you, I, uh, declare that we have quorum. And, um, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Sir, I would, uh...
Mr. Canaan?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the agenda with the exception of, uh, the approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting of April 21st, and also, I would, uh, recommend that we move item nine to following item sixteen.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, pull, uh, the minutes from, uh, April 21st out of the consent agenda for discussion, um, but to approve the consent agenda otherwise, and, uh, to, uh, change the agenda by moving the, uh, issue, um, item number nine, uh, fighting by arrangement to the end of the agenda today. Um, is there any other additional, uh, things to consider on consent? I thought we were, we're just on the agenda.
We're just, we're just approving agendas.
Okay, okay, all right. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, so we, I, so we approved consent, we didn't, we don't have the finance report in here.
We, we approved the agenda.
As part of it, we approved the agenda?
Yeah, now we're gonna do the, the communications.
Well, that, okay. All right. I'm sorry, I'm mixed up on this because I thought we were gonna do something different than that. Okay, all right, so, we approved the agenda, we have communications from the floor. So, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, will be given an opportunity to speak later on, and I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Mike McDonald, I live at twelve twenty North Broadway, and I'd like to talk to you about water rights. About fifteen, ten years ago, this city was trying to acquire all the water rights that they could. Uh, I have a townhouse up on West Park, across the Methodist Church, and I have a water right, plus an irrigation assessment. I think the nearest ditch is, I don't know, half a block away. Uh, I think, two things, I think it would be a good idea if you talked it over and perhaps decided to, uh, acquire some more water rights. Uh, right now, there's no problem with the water, but there could be, if my memory serves me correctly, at that particular time, uh, we were worried that, uh, we weren't gonna get enough, uh, water out of the canal, and, for summer. Uh, I would be happy to give my water rights to the city, uh, I think, uh, probably the rest of people up there would too, I don't speak for them, I just think so. But there's some things going on around the county that I think, uh, it would behoove us to acquire as many water rights as we can. I really can't go into that now, I'm gonna, I'll talk to Mr. Weaver about it, uh, sometime, but, uh, anyway, that's about what I wanted to say, and, uh, I wished you'd, uh, think about it. Any questions?
Your Honor? Uh, Mr. Butterfield, you must have something to say about this.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, Ms. McDonald, we're actually pleased you brought this up, the city is currently working through the process of acquiring a lot of rights throughout the city, for residents like yourself who no longer have access to the water right and assessments that, that is tied to their property. Um, the process by which you can go about transferring those rights to the city is relatively simple, and I'd be happy to meet with you after the meeting, or we can set a time to go through that. Um, the process basically, as you sign over the right on authorization to detach from the original adjudication of your right, and then, once the city is able to collect a number of those authorizations to detach, then we make, uh, an application to the State Board of Control, transfer those rights into the city's name, and more specifically, transfer them to the purpose of our water treatment plant. Um, which I agree one hundred percent, we wanna have an earlier priority date for our water treatment plant. Currently, we operate underwater rights for nineteen seventy-seven priority, and the majority of these rights tied to properties like yourself are nineteen oh six priority dates. So, we're working through that process right now, and we'd be happy to coordinate with you and any other resident wishes to transfer those rights over to the city of Riverton.
Okay, if I understand you correctly, then you're in favor of, of doing this. Okay, that'd be fine, that's all I wanted to know. Humbly thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on it right now. Is there anybody else who would like to address the city council?
Good evening, um, my name is Celeste McDonald, and I'm the Vice President of Corporate Communications for Management and Training Corporation, and I couldn't be prouder to say that last Friday, we found out that we had been selected to operate the new Wind River Job Corps Center. And so, we are so excited to be in Wind River, in Riverton, and along with me, you know, every job corps center has a center director, a leader, the one who has total responsibility for the three hundred students that will go to school there, and the over one hundred employees. And that center director is Julie Gassner, so I'd like to introduce her to you now.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us here, we are looking so forward to serving and working with you and the community to provide the best opportunity for the youth of Wyoming, as well as the Wind River Valley and beyond. So, we look forward to working with you, and scheduling additional meetings and follow-up appointments as we move forward in our transition process.
And we've also been working with the Wyoming Department of Workforce Services, so if you know of any teachers, instructors, health service workers, placement counselors, security personnel, anyone looking for a job, they can go to the, um, Department of Workforce Services, and, um, they'll find a list of jobs there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming, we're so excited.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we really, we really are pumped up, so, okay, thank you. Okay, now we're to the consent agenda. So, uh, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, uh, the approval of minutes, May 5th, two thousand and fifteen, Finance Committee meeting, approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, May 5th, two thousand and fifteen, and open container permit application for Tracy Bush, May 6th, sixteenth, two thousand and fifteenth, baby shower at Sunset Park, three PM to six PM.
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
It's the recommendation of the Finance Committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, checks written for payroll and liabilities for April 3rd, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, and manual checks in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents, for a total of six hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Thank you. Is your motion?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Martinez? Seconded by, Mr. Bailey? Thank you. Okay, are there any, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye? Okay, the motion passes. The, uh, next item of business is public hearing and consideration of...
Point of order, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Uh, we called the, um, council meeting...
We better talk about those minutes.
Yes.
Wanna do that? Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Canaan, you, you pulled those minutes out.
Uh, yes, sir, I, I think there was some confusion on, uh, the item talked about for the fuel service bid award. Um, I think it says in the, uh, in the minutes that we, that the council approved Schedule One, um, but I think the intent of the council when we approved Schedule One was to use the, not sure it's in here, the, uh, the, the Bailey's type gas card in town, and to re, keep the Wix card, and to use those when we had to send city employees outside of the city limits where they needed a, a different gas card. And I think that's where the confusion was, as far as the intent of the council, and, and what got put into the minutes.
Okay, uh, how, how do you think we, my only question is, I, I agree that that is the, that that was the decision, was that, that, but I'm not sure that that's how the motion was worded. Is that what the, where the problem comes in?
Your Honor, we talked about this, um, initially, we were thinking you could vote to reconsider it, but the problem with reconsidering it, no one voted no, and that's usually how you vote to reconsider it, and then change the vote to make it for both cards. So, there is no reconsideration because everyone voted yes for it.
No, it's the, it's the prevailing side can move for reconsideration.
Your Honor?
So, everybody did, so, somebody could vote, we could, we could reconsider it.
Yeah, the prevailing side, anyone on the prevailing side can reconsider. Yeah. We could do that. Your, Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
Um, I would think that perhaps we could just go ahead and move to approve those minutes, and then vote to amend, or someone could introduce an amendment to them to change the intent, and then we could perhaps approve it that way, is that possible, or does that, or does it have to be a reconsideration of the whole thing? Okay.
Courtney says it doesn't matter? Or, I, I just want him to make it so that it's clear and clean, okay? And, and make sure that we understand what we're, what we were doing? And so...
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
If we didn't state the intent of the motion in the minutes, we simply need a correction to the minutes. If you all understood one thing, and I understood another, then it's, since I'm the one that did the minutes, or Megan and I, um, we simply need a correction to the minutes of, of what the intent of the motion was.
Okay, okay, so let's correct the minutes, to reflect that, that the vote in favor of Schedule One was to adopt that, but not to get rid of the Schedule Two, the Wix Card program that we were using for out-of-town travel. So, in, in essence, we accepted both schedules.
Do we need, do we need a vote to do that, or is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay, so I would, I guess I would move to clarify the minutes to reflect that we, that the intent was to accept both schedules and use Schedule One in town, Schedule Two out of town.
Second.
And moved and seconded? Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor, Mayor votes aye? Now, so we amended the, we amended those minutes? Do any, we don't need to approve that now, that we've amended it?
Do not, now we need to approve the minutes.
Yeah, I think we ought to, yeah, I think so. Okay, so, all, so now I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Your Honor, I, uh, make a motion that we approve the amended minutes of, uh, April 21st, two thousand five, two thousand and fifteen, regular council meeting?
Okay.
Second.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye? I think we did that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, okay, so now we're gonna move on to item number ten, a public hearing and consideration of a bar and grill liquor license. Could we have the city clerk's report?
Your Honor, absolutely. We received a, the city clerk's office received a bar and grill license from Patricia Fulmer, DBA Maine, Manhattan, and, uh, the application has been certified as complete by the liquor division. By the way, this is our first bar and grill license for quite some time in the eight and a half years I've been here, or, application. Um, there was one minor hitch, is that there were some funds due to the city, and, uh, we've always had a good working relationship with Mrs. Fulmer, and, uh, she paid eighty percent of what she was, of what was due the city, and we have her guarantee that the other twenty percent will be paid this Friday. So, based upon the application being certified by the liquor division, and we're satisfied with what she has done with, uh, her working relationship with the city staff, would recommend approval of bar and grill license.
Okay. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Still moved.
Mr. Bailey?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Martinez. Uh, all those in favor, are, is there any discussion on having that? Okay, all those in favor of the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, the public hearing is now open. Uh, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, with other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, uh, issue?
Being none, Your Honor, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, so, um, the public hearing is closed. So, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the bar and grill liquor license.
Your Honor?
I would like to make a motion to approve the bar and grill application for Patricia Fulmer, DBA Maine, Manhattan, on the contingency that she has paid the twenty percent by Friday.
Second. Been moved and seconded, seconded by Mr. Larson. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bailey?
Um, city clerk, is there a statutory limit on how many bar and grill licenses that we can issue? And how many do we have issued at this point?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
We have absolutely no, no bar and grill license issued to this point, statutorily, by population, we can have, uh, three.
Any other questions, discussion, concerns?
Your Honor?
Mr. Larson?
What's the difference between a regular, assumable, uh, liquor license and a bar and grill liquor license?
Can you explain that, Mr. Weaver?
Your Honor, that, they're just like a restaurant liquor license, the only difference is, you can have a bar or lounge as a part of that. They're, they're a food operation, so they operate a lot like a restaurant, but they can have a bar or lounge as a part of their, in their building.
So, they have a physical place of delivery, and you can sit next to it while they're delivering it?
That's right.
Versus, the restaurant is, it's set apart, and they deliver it to the table.
Yes, Your Honor, it's comparable to, like an Applebee's, that's all I can think of, where the bar is kind of out in, in the mix, and they, any other restaurant, they would have to be back in the server area, which would be in the back, where you don't see that, and bring the alcohol out that way.
Okay, and there's a requirement for sixty percent of the revenue to be food, is that correct? Forty, forty percent can be alcohol, but, s, a minimum of sixty percent?
That's correct.
Has to be food. Mr. Bailey?
If I remember from our presentation, from the liquor commission, that does not allow catering, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The, uh, next item of business is a replat, number three, of, uh, replats Lot 1A and 1B, Day and Teeter addition. Could we get the Community Development Director's report?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, this is a plat that's located between West Sunset Drive and West Bell Avenue on North First Street. The area was first replatted in two thousand and six, and then again in two thousand and eight. Now, the petitioner is requesting this replat to create three lots, uh, from, if, uh, from two lots. Uh, the new lots you'll see on your plan there show lots 1C, 1D, and 1E, and those three lots came from lots 1A and lots 1B on the northeast of this subdivision. Five-foot utility irrigation and drainage easements were created on the east, west, and north side, sides of each of these newly created, uh, lots, and there is a twenty-foot portion of the forty-foot wide existing utility irrigation, drainage, and private road easement that is on the south end of each lot. Uh, the planning commission did recommend approval of this replat on April 23rd of two thousand and fifteen.
Uh, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move to approve the replat of lots 1A and 1B in the Day and Teeter addition.
Second. And second, Mr. Larson, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
What's the zoning of the lots?
I believe this is a residential B.
Residential B, thank you.
Oh, Your Honor?
Mr. Larson?
Are taps available for this? In other words, when we take two lots, and cut them into three, do we have taps available for... do we have taps available for, for the sewer and water?
Your Honor, I'm, I'm not absolutely sure of that, but that will be something that that, they will have to do during the development of these properties.
Okay. And that's at their expense, right?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Fire hydrant replacement project award. Could we get the report from the Public Works Director, please?
Your Honor, the force recommendation-
Oh, did I jump over that? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Well, I'm not tracking tonight for some reason, I apologize. Force Committee Recommendation for a Dura-Patcher. Public Works Director, your part.
Yes, Your Honor. At the April seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, uh, Force Committee Meeting, a committee member, uh, motioned that the city council consider uh, the purchase of a Dura-Patcher using one percent funds. This motion was amended to have the city consider using both City of Riverton and one percent funds towards the purchase of a Dura-Patcher. And maybe for clarification for those watching at home and in the audience, a Dura-Patcher is basically a piece of equipment that assists with repairing and preserving our pavement system throughout our city. It can be operated by one to two laborers, typically two. And using basically a spray injection system where forced air um, allows emulsified asphalt and chips to combine, and then, um, set in areas of disrepair, potholes, areas of settling, et cetera, et cetera. The City of Riverton has rented the Dura-Patcher a total of four times in the last two years. Um, each time for a one-month period. Uh, the rental fees for a one-month period is four thousand dollars. This, uh, consideration went before the council a year ago, many of you might remember. On May twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, uh, the Force Committee passed a motion recommending the city council purchase the Dura-Patcher outright. Uh, this recommendation was presented at the May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, and June third, two thousand and fourteen, council meeting. After discussion and consideration of that force recommendation, the city council unanimously voted against using one percent funds to purchase the Dura-Patcher. At this time, staff would like to communicate this request by our citizens committee who have been charged to um, safeguard and help steer the, the use of our one percent funds to represent our citizens in the community, and, uh, find the best use for those around us for the City of Riverton, for our infrastructure. So, would like you to consider this recommendation from them. You have several options at this time as you consider, um, this recommendation. City council could approve the force recommendation to purchase the Dura-Patcher using both City of Riverton and one percent funds. Conversely, the city council could choose to use one hundred percent of the one percent funds, or one hundred percent of city funds to purchase that Dura-Patcher. Or the city council could choose to not approve the- Um, we talk about budget impacts. One percent fund does have sufficient funds available towards the purchase of the Dura-Patcher, however, if City of Riverton funds are used, um, reserves, a general fund would need to be used. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to, uh, the chair would entertain a motion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey.
Can we ask a couple of questions first before we-
Sure.
Have a motion. I, I guess my question would be, are there any limitations on what we use the one percent funds for? Can it or cannot not be used to purchase equipment to repair streets and stuff?
Mr., Mr. Butterfield, have you got it there to read?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, pursuant to, pursuant to the resolution that was passed, prior to the one percent funds going to the ballot, the verbiage reads as such. Um, each incorporated municipality in Fremont County has passed a resolution for the, towards the purpose, excuse me, the purpose of which is for infrastructure projects related to streets, roads, bridges, water, and sewer utilities. So, when you look at that verbiage, um, certain determinations need to be made as far as, uh, how you wanna define projects related to. And what defines a project, what defines improving streets, roads, bridges, waters, and sewer utilities. So, the, the verbiage there is fairly clear on the fact that the one percent monies are used to improve our infrastructure. However, several semantical, if that's a word, interpretations can be made regarding infrastructure projects, and then projects related to. So, I'm not, I'm not really clearly answering your question, I know that. But I wanted to, I wanted to at least read the verbiage from the resolution. When we have talked with several members of our community, there are different interpretations regarding the use of one percent funds, whether it could be used towards a piece of equipment that is expressly used for uh, street maintenance and repair. Whether it can be used for engineering, whether it can be used for the purchase of material and equipment. Those conversations are going, and I think, um, there's a broad spectrum of certain ideas of how to best use those funds. Personal opinion, we have a lot of roads to take care of, and we're grateful that our citizens have passed this one percent fund. We wanna use it in the best way possible to improve our infrastructure, and it needs it. When we talk about the, the purchase of a Dura-Patcher, and perhaps, uh, Your Honor, you may wanna explore an idea that you mentioned with me today, but when we look at the verbiage of projects related to, now I see this as we could develop a project to improving and preserving our pavement infrastructure, citywide. Projects from the one percent fund are, are great, but they are only able to focus on location-specific projects. For example, um, at the last council meeting, a council approved six site-location projects. Some of them were chip seals, some of them were overlays. But we still have a whole network of pavement to maintain. And, I believe, um, similar to how a paver is a piece of equipment that is used on a one percent fund project, a Dura-Patcher could be used in a project-related sense to improve our infrastructure. When I've spoken with public works staff and, uh, small number of the community, those patches that are made from that Dura-Patcher, they hold up, they last, and they provide a quick benefit to our city, especially when we think about the amount of labor that's required to operate it. So, we get a, a large bang for our buck. I'm getting a little wordy, and please forgive me. But I think we could consider doing a pavement preservation project where we utilize the Dura-Patcher and are able to perhaps follow that force recommendation of doing a fifty-fifty split on a project related to pavement preservation with the use of a Dura-Patcher. Thank you.
Yes, and a follow-up-
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
The materials that are used in that process, the asphalt and chips, are they considered part of the one percent improvements?
Your Honor, I would make a determination that materials used to put back into the road are, are definitely qualified under that one percent amount. And perhaps, uh, with the liberty of, Your Honor, I'd be happy to go over a few numbers I threw together real quick before the council meeting.
Well, that's, that's what I was wondering, is if you were able to identify, you know, some expenditures from the city that's currently in our budget that would, uh, could, we could call it a match.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
So, in running a few numbers, if we consider this pavement preservation project, based off of amounts that we charge, um, that were developed in two thousand and thirteen for our labor and also our equipment, again, the Dura-Patcher would require two laborers from the city, a dump truck. From those hourly rates, I estimated that each month we would spend at least fifteen working days using that Dura-Patcher. That gives us a few days of leeway if we needed to pull crews off to handle emergencies. So, on fifteen working days a month, with two laborers, a dump truck, that equals twelve thousand and change a month. Now, for material, that would be the emulsified oil and the chips. Following the same logic, and utilizing the numbers we have when we rent the Dura-Patcher, per month, that's eighty-three hundred dollars. Combined, we look at, with labor, material, that's twenty thousand dollars and change each month. I would propose that we develop a two-year project where we were able to use the Dura-Patcher a month in the spring, a month in the summer, a month in the fall. Unfortunately, we don't have enough, um, staff to just run it full-time. And we gotta use our crack sealer, we gotta grade alleys, we've gotta paint the roads and the curbs, and so I think that's appropriate. We project a project for two years, where we use a month, spring, summer, and fall, each of those years, so that would be six months. Um, we could then calculate for that six-month total, one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-two, one hundred and twenty-two. When we contacted Newmont Equipment, who currently leases the Dura-Patcher to us, prices for the Dura-Patcher ranged between, uh, fifty-six to sixty-four thousand for a used model, and seventy-two thousand for a new model. So, if we combine that project in total, labor, equipment, material, and the Dura-Patcher, on that two-year period, the project total will be one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And if we could go off the logic of our one percent committee, fifty percent, one percent funds, and fifty percent city funds, I believe our labor, our dump truck, and even cost splitting on the emulsified asphalt and the chips would help us reach that fifty-fifty split, purchase the Dura-Patcher for that two-year project.
Mr. Larson.
When you say you're using it for six months, or you're using it for one month, spring, summer, fall, those are one months, that's three, but yet you counted six.
For, for a two-year period.
Okay, but my question is this. And I was here last year when we voted for it and against it. So, I've got some background knowledge in it. My question is this, what advantage do we have for owning that when we can rent it cheaper than we can own it? One. Two, is how long is our one percent good for? That's gonna come up again for revote. And I, and I hate to say it, but I don't think equipment is part of the one percent. Just like sidewalks are not part of the one percent. Yeah, we did them. And we did them as a mistake. But we did them nevertheless. So, my question is this, I don't think that if you looked at it with four thousand a month, that you're gonna come up with that, that rosy figure.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Larson. If, I looked at that, and if we follow the same logic, it would take five years to pay for itself on that rental basis of four thousand a month. And I know this is something the council has considered before. This is something our committee wished that we bring before you. Uh, we're happy to go the direction that the council feels is appropriate. Again, we appreciate the use of these one percent funds. In fact, I don't think we can maintain our city infrastructure without them. And so, we wanna make sure we, we get the most bang for our buck, and do the best job possible with those funds. That, the period by which, uh, we can use those funds is a four-year period, and then it is going on the ballot again.
So, we'll overstep it by one year. If you, if you were saying it's four years, and the term to buying one by paying for it by rental is five years. So, we'd overstep it one year. What's, what's, when we rent it, don't we get a, a new piece of equipment every time, or do we, they just give us the old shoe?
Your Honor, they provide a, a used rental model. They provide, it's not a new model. Um, you just get one that's available on the lot that's a used rental piece of equipment.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Mr. Fabian.
I think that we probably should get a motion on the floor before we continue to-
Do you have one?
I do. I would move to approve the purchase of the Dura-Patcher for the sake of discussion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, keep going.
Alright.
Do you have, do you have additional comment?
Yeah. Um, so I'm torn on this because I don't think anyone sitting here wants to do anything to jeopardize the, the future passing of the one percent. And yet, on the flip side of the coin, if we were sitting here discussing putting out a pothole repair project to bid, I don't think anybody would care whether that contractor had a Dura-Patcher that they were gonna use. And that's the, I mean, I guess therein is the rub, that, like, is it, is it, isn't it, and I, you know, that's the, I guess that's the hard part, um. You know, the reason our roads look like they do is because the city doesn't have enough money to maintain them. You know, and so, that's part of why we now have a one percent. I think the citizens saw that our roads were in disrepair, and we needed a method to maintain our roads. And that was a big part of why we have a one percent now, so I guess that's why I'm torn on this, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna alienate the people who passed the one percent, and yet we need to maintain our roads, and this piece of equipment could help us do that, so I guess I'm not really sure where I fall at this point.
Mr. Bailey.
Your Honor, again, being new on the council, the absolute first phone call that I got when I announced that I was running was regarding potholes. So, I think it is one of the highest priority things that the citizens notice, because everybody who drives down the road notices that when there's a pothole placed where the road's in disrepair, and so I'm definitely for keeping potholes maintained, and I think probably the most efficient way to do it is for the city staff to be able to react quickly, go out, repair those things before they grow into something that's gonna swallow a small car. And, so I think, I think this is a good idea, and I think to me, that's what the one percent was intended to do. I think, again, like Councilman Fabian said, if we put that out to bid, it would cost us a lot more than what we're gonna spend with two employees, a dump truck, and this Dura-Patcher. So, really, the question just becomes down to whether it's more cost-efficient to rent it or to own it. Five-year payoff. I don't think the potholes are gonna quit appearing. I mean, that's just part of life. And I think something that the city would definitely get value back out of. Make them available to where if we had that available, somebody sees a problem, they're gonna go react to it in a quick fashion, which is gonna keep citizens happier with the roads. So, I, I would be for purchasing the Dura-Patcher just because I think we would more use out of it if we owned it and had it sitting here than if we were gonna say, oh, we're gonna rent it this month. Oh, we don't have it this month, we can't fix the holes, we'll have to wait till next month, or whatever it would be. So, I think effort to be able to respond quickly to those things, I think it would be an advantage to own the piece of equipment. I think, to me, either sharing, like Butterfield had suggested, that the city's already putting in the labor, the truck, other things that, to split that with the one percent committee, I think would be a fair and equitable way to do that.
Your Honor.
Mr. Fabian.
A couple of things. First of all, you said we've rented it how, how many times now?
Your Honor, we've rented it four times in two years.
Okay, and in that course of that time, have we had any issues with repairs, or, or breakdowns, or anything like that?
Your Honor, last fall, we had an issue with the, with the Dura-Patcher breaking down. I attribute that to being an old model. Um, the company who rents that equipment, piece of equipment to us was very fair with us, they gave us extra time, and also added in, uh, emulsified asphalt to compensate for the time that it was down. So, that's, that's the only time since my tenure that it has been- So that's the only time since my tenure that it has been down.
I'm just kind of, I guess that's the other, you know, mystery thing out there when you start looking at the cost of owning versus the cost of renting. I mean, when it broke down, we caught them and they fixed it, or gave us a different one or whatever. And if we own it, whatever it takes to keep it running is on us. So I was just trying to get a feel for where that's at. I mean, the numbers you cited were based on the lowest purchase price to pay out in five years, correct?
Your Honor, I base that off of purchasing it for sixty-five thousand. That's roughly the new cost subtracting the rent that we've paid.
Okay, so you were actually basing on a new...
I went high just for the purpose of having that as a level of discussion.
Mr. Canaan.
Sir, I guess my concern with using the one percent funds is that it would give the city a piece of equipment that then we would be able to go out and use on a project that the force committee hasn't looked at, hasn't approved. And yet, and I guess that's where my concern is, is using those one percent monies, even in a shared effort to help the city buy that piece of equipment. Is that right now, that equipment is rented and used on force committee recommendations that we, that are approved. Or now, if we went out and bought it using those types of monies, we could fix, you know, Street A, and the force committee would have no say on the matter. And I guess that's where I have that concern about using those one percent monies. I don't have any question that the city probably has a need for that piece of equipment and probably can use it. I think if the city needs it that bad, then we should be looking at using strictly city funds.
Your Honor. Mr. Martinez.
I have a couple. First one is, are we able, if we have voted on this, that the city to buy that, will we be able to put that in the budget for this year, this next coming fiscal year?
Your Honor, the way I would answer, and I know Mr. Weaver and Ms. Bellinger may have an opinion as well. We could put it in, but it would just come out of reserves. That's how it would be paid for.
And do we have enough money in the reserves to take care of this?
Your Honor, we do.
Then I would be in favor of purchasing it. If the city purchasing it and not using any of the one percent money.
Your Honor, just a point of clarification with Councilman Canaan. The projects that are going out with the Durapatcher are not going through the force committee. And so they're not approving saying, go here, go there, fill in those potholes. It's strictly going around and finding potholes and filling them in.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is that we now use one percent monies on projects that the force committee recommends and that are approved. Or now you'd be taking that one percent money and essentially buying a piece of equipment, like you said, that we would be using citywide, whether it was on a force-approved project or not.
Let me say something. My concern here is to, was to try to figure out a way that we could actually turn this into a project that the force committee would buy off on. And by doing that, it would be the city proposing a particular project that would be done with city staff instead of hiring contractor. So that it would, we could do little tiny jobs here and there scattered all over town that wouldn't take any engineering or forethought and that type of thing to work on. And yet, we would have a project that Mr. Butterfield called a pavement preservation. Is that what I heard? Yeah. Okay, so the idea in mind in keeping the streets that are still functional, functional. And by addressing those weaknesses in the pavement in a timely manner. Having a Durapatcher sitting in the yard simply gives us a great deal of flexibility to deal with those issues as opposed to renting it. I know that, you know, so even when we rented it for the month, I'm sure that that machine set idle a great deal of the time, and we simply didn't have the manpower to make it go out and work eight hours a day, five days a week while we had it. And so the issue for us is, is that we could, in a five-year period of time, we could own the machine, and the machine's probably got a useful life of, well, in excess of that. And so we would have, we would have that machine available to us, even if we didn't get the one cent reauthorized. And it's a piece of equipment that is so unique in design that I don't see that there's any way to apply that as, in another form, to city projects. Say, compare that to a dump truck. You see, where if we used one percent money to buy a dump truck, then obviously that dump truck could be diverted to some other purpose. But the Durapatcher is gonna fix a street, and that's really what it's gonna do. And so that was my thought, was to do that. But I have to tell you, my original thought, Mr. Martinez, was that we should simply decide if we needed to own that machine or not, and if we did, buy it. And see how we could make that work with our capital budget, but...
I have another one here, another question here that's, and the reason I bring this up is because Job Corps is here. You might wanna hear this. Because down the road, Job Corps pavement will need repaired. Could we rent this to another entity to do their repairs? Our equipment, could we rent it to, say, Job Corps, the City of Land, or Town Shoshone, to do a repair on their streets?
Your Honor, I know in the past, the city is very careful not to compete with private entities and private businesses. So that's my disclaimer, but we do rent our pieces of equipment. Mr. Throckmorton, who used to be the streets superintendent, developed hourly rates for every one of our pieces of equipment and our laborers just so we can rent the Vector, for example, to someone who's having a sewer backup, and they can't get anyone there from the private sector to help them. So there is the option of renting that to other entities. Specifically, I think, between other government entities, I don't see a problem at all. We are just very careful not to compete with the private sector and other businesses.
And I was just looking down the road, because you will have that problem. Thank you.
Your Honor. Mr. Bailey.
Okay, I guess in answer to Mr. Canaan's comment, this did come to us from the force committee. Okay, so I think we are definitely behind this. I don't think, and again, not speaking for them directly, but I don't think we would have any problem going to them saying, X dollars per year we wanna spend on pothole and pavement maintenance, and having them consider that part of a project that could be funded by the one percent. And so again, they came to a saying, they thought we should split half and half between the city and the one percent fund. So I don't, I think they're behind it, so I don't think that's really a... And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that I think we'd make very good use of this. It would make it very available for us, and we could, things moving along, which is the whole intent of the project.
Mr. Martinez.
We have to remember too, that any committee that the city has, all they do is make recommendations they don't pass and tell you what we have to do. We, as the city council, will make that approval of where we're gonna use any piece of equipment.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Your Honor, I would like to have that clarified on exactly, because we've discussed a lot of options.
Okay, so the motion was to buy a Durapatcher, was that it? It was pretty simple, right? Buy a Durapatcher, and it didn't say how we were gonna do that, or...
And we would need to know if we're gonna buy the new one, or we're gonna buy the newest one on the used list, or...
Mr....
Your Honor, I would recommend us purchasing the new one or the newest used one. These are rented out, they have tar and oil and rock running through them on a regular basis. And I think to get a better value, we really should explore getting something fairly new so we can have it last us longer. The difference between the newest used one, or even the middle-used one, and the new version, I think, is negligible when we're looking at future maintenance requirements.
Should we, I think we ought to amend that motion. If we're gonna, so that we've got that clarity. Do you have something to say, Eric?
Now you get to hear from the nerd in the room.
Okay.
My name's Eric Carr. I'm a civil engineer here in Riverton. Just to give you a little background, I have placed well over 1.5 million tons of asphalt in Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, and Utah on heavily specified jobs. So federal aviation, Army Corps, Department of Defense, and the DOTs. The issue that I have with this particular technology is there's no mixed design involved. There's also no quality control involved. When we talk about asphalt, we like to talk about air voids. We like to talk about voids in mineral aggregate. We also like to talk about voids filled with asphalt. Those are all indicators of how long a pavement will last. This particular technology does not offer that ability. We don't have any knowledge, at least I don't have any knowledge of that. The application rates are based on visual inspection only. And more importantly, there's no grade control. So when they came back through our alley the other week, we just pushed the puddles around instead of being able to drain the property effectively. The technique, I wrote this down, I probably shouldn't have. Techniques basically turns our paved roads back to gravel. When you walk over this application, a lot of it gets stuck to your feet. You drag it into your house, you drag it into your office, it stains carpet. I think we're far better off crack sealing as, in a professional opinion. And I equate this to nitroglycerin pills for a heart patient. The damage has been done. When we should've chipped sealed, we didn't. When we should've cracked sealed, we didn't. Now our pavement has deteriorated to the point that we need something to fix it, but we're not fixing it in the correct manner. I would absolutely recommend waiting for the recommendations prior to purchasing a piece of equipment of this nature until we have the results from the pavement assessment study. So if you have any questions, that's everything I needed to say, so...
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
May I respond to a few of those comments?
You bet.
As far as the grading, I think Mr. Carr has a point there. But you don't grade with cold patch or temporary patches either. I see this as a more long-term and suitable fix for areas that have had chuck holes, asphalt blowing out, potholes, which you cannot crack seal and fix. You're required to put in more asphalt. Yes, it would be great if we could tear up an area of pavement that has just had its beating over the winter, or it's just degrading to a point that it's old. But we can't do that citywide, we would go bankrupt. We have enough areas that have potholes that have degrading asphalt issues where we have to patch them. And our options to patch them are either to use a cold mix and go in there and hand-compact it or drive and compact it, use a plate compactor. We can use hot mix if it's in season, we can't do that in the winter. And then it's the same thing, except you're using a hot mix that will bond together. You're still patching a pothole. You don't do spec designs on cold mix or pothole mixes just because you're filling voids that have been blown out in the pavement. I agree 100%. If we could go through, mill out, and pave all these areas of our streets that are just struggling, that would be great, and we would love to go through the engineered process of getting a proper spec design, a proper aggregate design, paving the doggone thing. But when we're looking at maintaining what we have and keeping them going, you gotta repair pothole patches, and that's what this does, it helps us repair potholes. Now, when they set up, the original application, it is gooey and it is tarry, and it will get on your shoes. That's why we add more aggregate to it to try and protect that from getting on people's wheels or on their shoes. However, when it sets up, it solidifies. The ones that we were able to do last fall and even prior to that are performing well. They haven't blown out, which would happen a lot of times if you're using a cold mix or even a hot mix, it's bonded fairly well. So while it looks like it may be a gravel surface, that's just, we're trying to protect people's cars and shoes from the tar that's underneath it that's mixed with the aggregate that when it sets up, that's the pothole patch, the aggregate on top was just trying to be courteous. And we did have a couple of issues when we went to repair the alleys on the north and south side of Main Street, which are concrete alleys, which haven't been maintained in a lot of years. And our options were leave them the way they are, put dirt in them, put cold mix in them. We thought it would be a great idea to use some of the Durapatcher material, and we hope it'll last a little longer than using recycled asphalt or some other material until we repave those concrete alleys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Lato.
Hi, my name's Kyle Lato. I live at 222 East Adams. I work for HDR Engineering, and I'm also the chairman, treasurer, as it were, for the PAC, Citizens for Improved Roads. We're the ones that kinda helped get the one percent passed this last time around. I've talked with Kyle, and I've talked with Lars and Steven kind of about this issue a little bit. I guess just from a PAC, the PAC's kind of point of view is we're not talking a lot of money here in the overall scheme of things. So it might just make sense to not go down that slippery slope of purchasing a piece of equipment and just buy, like Councilman Martinez had suggested, just by using, you know, city funds outside of the one percent. I think that's a good recommendation, and I think it's, when we're, you know, the last time this passed, we were, what, 51 to 48, or, I mean, it was really tight. So let's not roll the dice with this sort of thing, you know? And just, if it's just a little bit of money, I don't disagree that this is a good, you know, a piece of equipment that is useful and has performed well over two years or three years that we've used it. I don't disagree that it's needed, I just think it may be prudent to take a step back and maybe purchase this piece of equipment and use it as a maintenance piece of equipment just in your general maintenance, as part of your general maintenance for the city. I think it would be a good piece of equipment to add as a tool to combat some of these stop-gap measures like, you know, cold mixes and crack sealing and some of those things that aren't intended to be long-term fixes but are intended to make the road ridable for a season or two until you can actually get to that bad piece of pavement with a better, either reconstruction or overlay or a chip seal. By the time you're using the Durapatcher most of the time, though, it's a failed piece of pavement with, you know, the subgrades blown out, and you're basically at the point of a reconstruct at that point. In any case, that's just my two cents, and I appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to discuss this, and that's really important. And we all agree that it's needed, so let's just kinda think about the best way to get it passed this next time. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Ms. Fabian.
I would move to amend the motion on the floor to have that be purchased with City of Riverton reserves.
Second. Moving seconded. Purchase that with the reserve fund.
That would be the new version.
Okay, so we've got an amendment to change that. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
Your Honor, is that in this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
Ballander, do you have a recommendation?
Your Honor, we have reserves for either fiscal year, so whatever your preference. We have to do a budget amendment in June anyway, and go ahead and make the purchase this year with reserve funds, or we can put it in the budget for next fiscal year.
My opinion would be, we're gonna do it, let's get it done, we've got a summer right now.
Mr. Larson.
Kyle, is that, is that gonna be a brand-new piece that you've figured with, or the newest old piece, or however you figure it, or have you got current bids on that?
Your Honor, we did solicit bids from the company that we currently rented from. Their price for a new model is $72,150, and their used models range from $56,920 to $64,760.
Are they gonna credit any rent towards any of that?
Per this quote, they said we will apply 100% of this year's rent to the purchase of any new or rental dura-patcher.
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian.
Will we put this out to bid, like to multiple things, or was the plan just to buy it from these people, or?
Your Honor, per our procurement policy, we will have to put it out to bid. Normon Equipment could definitely submit their bid on that, but because of the price, unless we can piggyback off of a state contract, which I doubt there is one for a dura-patcher, we will have to bid it.
Thank you.
Why wouldn't we wanna bid it?
Just clarifying that it would be a bid. Any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on the amendment, okay? So we're voting, we're voting to amend the motion to use city funds out of reserves to purchase this dura-patcher.
Out of current?
Out of current.
Current reserves.
Current reserves. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay, the motion has been amended. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Now it's time for fire hydrant replacement. Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. City staff is requesting approval from the city council to award the 2015 Fire Hydrant Replacement Project in the amount of $169,325 to Viper Underground. This will be part of our miscellaneous water improvement capital project in our current fiscal year budget. The reason why we're doing this project is the city, over the years, has aging infrastructure all over, and part of that are our fire hydrants. Many of them are not even in service, and our collection and distribution department are constantly out there trying to repair, fix, and put these fire hydrants in service. The current project is recommending the replacement of 16 non-functioning fire hydrants. There are more that we could look at, but it's cost prohibitive, so at this time, we'd like to ask the council approval to award this project of replacing 16 fire hydrants to Viper Underground. Three bids were received and opened publicly April 23rd, and Viper Underground was the low bid. This project will span two fiscal years and will be paid for out of this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. We do have budgeted funds in each year to cover the cost of this project. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion? Question. Mr. Larson?
We had a project where we were surveying water leakage. Are these 16 part of that water leakage study?
Your Honor, some of them were notified, or identified, excuse me, under that leak detection survey, and that's what the miscellaneous water capital project line item was for. However, there was not sufficient funds to go after all of the leaks that were discovered under that leak detection survey. Therefore, staff made the decision to focus on these fire hydrants only and repair them based on the data that we did receive from that leak detection survey.
Mr. Martinez?
I make a motion that we approve the fire hydrant replacements for 16 fire hydrants in this fiscal year.
Been moved, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
What, which fund is this coming from? Is this general fund, is this water fund?
Your Honor, this is coming out of the water fund.
And to what degree is the, is the water, the large water project, is it pretty well buttoned up at this point?
Your Honor, we have another entire phase of the Riverton Water Supply Project to complete. That is gonna be a transmission line from Airport Hill, where our new infrastructure is, down to Riverview Road, basically. None of that has been completed, our plans are at about 90%, and we've received Wyoming Water Development Funds to help us with that, and that is in about $3.6 million for that phase three. We need to expand those funds by 2017. Staff is currently working on easements and also working with the tribes on locating the best alignment for that Phase III project.
Thank you.
Mr. Command? For replacing 16, how many, can you, if you have it off the top of your head, how many hydrants are out of service?
Your Honor, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Is there an area of the city that, let's say, isn't covered by a good working hydrant?
Fortunately, Your Honor, excuse me, fortunately this time, we don't have any public safety concerns because we have operating fire hydrants close enough to these inoperating ones. However, the more, the better, and would like to replace the ones that just are old and not functioning. So from a public safety standpoint, we are okay.
Okay.
I believe the motion was just to do the project, we need to specify the contractor in that.
Viper.
No, that's correct, it's Viper Underground.
Viper.
End it to award it to Viper.
Yeah, we can do that, I'll make the motion to end it, that the contractor be Viper Underground.
I'll second.
Okay, we have an amendment, so there's no discussion on that, all those in favor of the amendment, go to Viper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Any further discussion on the project? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Pavement Assessment Award, we are, we are working, Mr. Butterfield, tonight, aren't we?
Your Honor, thank you. Staff would, let me start over, excuse me. Your Honor, staff has looked into providing better recommendations to our force committee, and as you are aware, we put out a pavement assessment pavement management plan study. That study was advertised as a request for qualification, and we received six submittals of qualifications from firms, the following firms are MDS Technologies Incorporated, Enberg Miller Engineers, IMS Infrastructure Management, James Gores and Associates, Peaks to Plains Engineers, and Dowell Incorporated. As part of the request for qualification process, this service is solely based off of the qualifications and the ability for these firms to provide the service that we are looking for. As such, a selection committee was assembled of seven people. Two of these members were from our force committee, one was from our technical advisory committee to the force, one was our council liaison to the force, and then three staff members. This selection committee received the submittals of qualification from all six firms who desired to do this work. After the selection committee reviewed these submittals and rated them based on a scale of familiarity with the project, experience, familiarity with our local area, and responsiveness to the actual request for qualification, that weighted scale and scoring rated IMS Infrastructure Management as the firm most qualified to do this work. IMS Infrastructure Management is located out of Arizona and will travel to the City of Riverton to provide this work. That being said, they have partnered with HDR Engineers, with the City of Riverton, located in the City of Riverton, excuse me, as a subcontractor to help them provide some of the support and also the management of this study and management plan. When we look at each of these firms, any of these firms could honestly provide this work for us, and staff does have discretion on who they like to select. The selection committee did rate IMS Infrastructure the highest. However, some of our local firms were also rated high as well. That's something the council would like to explore, they can. We cannot base our selection off of price. In fact, as part of their submittal of qualification, there is a sealed estimate, cost estimate, those have not been opened. We wanted to make sure we were unbiased in this selection because the purpose of this is to receive a professional service from a firm who can rate the condition of our existing pavement and then develop a management plan to help us best use our funds, whether they be 1% funds or City of Riverton taxpayer. The council then has a few options. You may award this contract to IMS Infrastructure Management. Upon that award, would open the estimates and then negotiate with that firm the fee for their service. If council would like us to explore other firms, we can then shortlist based off of this consultant matrix and interview other firms, bring them in, and then make another recommendation to the council. So that's your second option. Third option is to do nothing.
We've had that place for years. That's what got us here. Yeah, I, okay, we've had the report, the chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move to award the project for the purpose of discussion.
Second.
To? I guess to, per staff, or per the recommendation.
IMS Infrastructure Management?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Bailey, discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Fabian?
So I, you know, if part of the idea of this is to have firms familiar with the project, I can't, I can't understand how a firm many states away could be better qualified than our local firms in Fremont County, especially when it's the opinion that any of the six who submitted would be able to perform the work well. I would be inclined to want to see maybe an interview or more, something more, or perhaps the rationale behind where this decision came from. I just, I have a hard time, you know, understanding how someone that far away could be better qualified than I see, what, at least three firms that are on this list that are located in Fremont County and drive on our streets every single day.
Your Honor, perhaps to even assist with Councilman Fabian's question, I would like to go through the rating scale and what was determined and what the selection committee actually scored. Qualifications of proposal was weighted at 25%. Successful experience and capabilities of the firm was weighted at 25%. Capability to meet the schedule was at 25%. Familiarity with the City of Riverton and their projects is at 20% weight. responsiveness to proposal was at 5%. I cannot speak for the entire selection committee, but I would assume the IMS Infrastructure Management rated high on their familiarity with the City of Riverton is because they hired a subcontractor located in the City of Riverton, which is HDR. I imagine that's probably why they scored a little higher. There was a firm from Idaho, which is Peaks to Plain, and then also MDS Technology, which was more Illinois-based. They did not score well. They scored well on their experience, but they did not score well with their familiarity with the City of Riverton.
Mr. Larson?
Did we, did we consult any other cities who they have used and what their feelings were, like, not Gillette, but, oh geez, it's tough to get old.
Your Honor, as part of staff's exploration into the idea of even doing this pavement assessment and pavement management plan, several cities within Wyoming were contacted. Trying to remember exactly who, I know Laramie was contacted, I believe Gillette was contacted, I think one other.
You had a report from Sheridan?
Perhaps it was Sheridan.
It was.
Ms. Dawn Wilhelm was very diligent in doing that. As part of the submittals of qualification from these firms, several of them listed the cities and towns and states they had worked with and counties. Some of them had worked within Wyoming, some of them haven't. Dowell HKM obviously had worked within Wyoming, Enberg Miller obviously worked within Wyoming, James Gores and Associates worked within Wyoming. That being said, IMS Infrastructure Management and MDS Technology, as part of their proposal, had done some assessment work and management work in Wyoming as well. Peaks to Plain Design had done no work in Wyoming.
Bailey?
I was one of the people who was on the selection committee, and I don't know how much, I don't know how much of this is supposed to be. There was quite a bit of technical differences between the companies in their, in the different ways that they were going to perform the assessment, and I think that's probably why IMS got rated higher is because I think technology that they would be using, to me, probably superior, which is one of the reasons they probably got rated higher. Some of the firms, everywhere from just visual, I forget how they termed it, windshield surveys, which I assume means they drive around, look at the street. So, I mean, we had everything from driving around, just looking at the street, to very technical, computerized, laser, what do you call it, stuff that they were using. Something, there's quite a bit of technical differences between the companies, and I think that's one of the reasons this one probably rated higher, if that helps everybody.
Your Honor, as a follow-up to Councilman Bailey's comment, there were different methods by which the assessment could be done. One was non-destructive with the technology of using a van that could drive around and using cameras, and then also sonar, laser, each company kind of proposed different systems. And they could drive through and take digital recordings of the surface level, or, excuse me, surface condition of the pavement. That can be completed through visual assessment as well. I think there's a time-saving on one. I don't prefer one over the other as a professional. I think each of these firms could have qualified staff members go out and visually track the condition of the pavement. But I also read many things about this technology, which was very impressive, that it could be done in a faster timeframe. Nothing's perfect, you have to kind of have a clean street to do it, so you have to make sure there's not a lot of chips or debris on there when the sensors go over it. But whether it's non-destructive, destructive... But whether it's non-destructive, destructive, I'm confident that the firms that scored high, no matter what technology they have, could perform the assessment and the management plan. IMS Infrastructure had the most experience because that's all they do. They're a firm that does only pavement assessment and management. And then in pairing with a local firm, I think that's why the committee, and again, I can't speak for everyone, I'm not really even speaking for how I rated them, but I, I believe that's why.
In other words, Mr. Larson. Can we get a record of that assessment in software form so that we have visual, which is the worst that we can attack versus visual, everything looks good here?
Your honor, yes. This study is going to be very beneficial, very usable for staff as part of these submittals. They will train our staff to use it for years to come, and we compare it with the software technology that we have. If we had a GIS system and technology in place, they'd put in our GI- GIS, they can also use our, our CAD software and help us with that as well. So the report will be able to pair with our current technology. It'll be a report that we will own and have at our access for years to come.
Do we own the software also?
Not at this time, that will be part of this project. The engineering firm will help us select a software package to purchase that will best, best match our needs and the current technology we have in our city right now.
Your honor.
Mr. Martinez.
On these selections that we made, how big a difference was there from IMS to the next one?
If we go from the, the top rating, and this was on a one to five scale, and again, it was weighted, the top raider was 4.32, the second was 4.14, the third was 4.12, so fairly close. The third was 4.05. And if, if the council feels confident in awarding the recommendation or the scoring of the selection committee, I would maybe recommend you make that motion. However, if you feel you need more information, we could shortlist the top scorers and provide in, and do an interview process and then come back with a recommendation. The only downside to that is it will take time to lay the start on this. Just something to consider.
Still on the same subject, I, I'm more inclined to go with a local company.
They don't have the technology.
They scored high. Our local company scored high, and I'm just in favor of going with a local company instead of somebody that's out of state. And that's just my opinion, and this is how I feel.
Your honor.
Fabian.
I'd like to amend my original motion that we, that we send the, the selection committee back to shortlist the top scorers and return to the council with their recommendations upon completion of those interviews.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend our motion to go for a shortlist on the contractors here and do some interviews, and, and I assume that includes discussion of cost at this point?
Your honor, I do not believe we can discuss cost until we have a firm selected. So this will be purely based off of their qualification.
Your honor, one other question.
Mr. Fabian.
Have, have you also discussed, like, the require, so you said that the street has to be clean, what about, what about like no cars on it, and like, is it barricaded off? What are, what are those requirements for this technology?
Your honor, it would, it would be best to have a perfectly clear road when we do this assessment. I don't think it's practical, trying to go street to street. Each process, whether it's the technology or whether it's a person actually doing the assessment, is going to have to wade through debris on the street and parked cars. I think we will do our best to notice neighborhoods and see if they can pull off the street and clear it as best as possible, but those obstructions will be something to consider, but the majority of the street will be open for assessment. It's not going to be that hindering to have those obstructions.
So they'll be able to still do it in spite of trailers or cars or something parked on the street?
Correct.
Mr. Caden.
You said it was going to take longer, would kind of give us an idea of what kind of delay you're talking, if you go with a shortlist and have to do the interviews.
Your honor, I would put at least two weeks for us to assemble these interviews together and make the assessment. As a point of clarification, are we wanting to shortlist the top scorers, which would include an out-of-state and in-state?
My opinion would be the top three.
You're thinking the top three, Mr. Larson. We've been, they've been working on this since January. It's May now. It'll be June or July, and the season will have been gone. Reason they've done this is because the technology, you can go on the internet and look for this technology. This technology doesn't exist in Wyoming. It's a developed technology outside of, of this area. They've got special equipment, goes into an area, completely analyzes what they have. We don't have the equipment. People on this list, Enberg Miller, they do great jobs on everything, don't have the expertise to do this. That's why they've done it. And to go in and to, um, meddle management, their decisions, it's, uh, it's fruition that we don't need to meddle in.
Good question.
Mr. Chivin.
Can the local companies get the technology? Like, is there, can we ask them if there's something else that they can offer that compares to us that we can keep the money in Wyoming with, and hopefully have it local? I mean, how does that work?
Your honor, based off of their submittals, the answer to that is no. When they prepared their qualifications, they, they did it on the best that they could provide and the best services they know how to do. Quick answer to that is.
See, I, I understand this, I understand this process, you know, of qualifying the guy, and then, and then we'll talk about the money later, but one of the principles that we work with all the time in contracting is that, is that we're going to give a 5% preference to the Wyoming company on a, on a construction bid, okay, over somebody from out of state. So here we are, operating kind of in the blind based on qualifications, and then we're going to go to this, so then we're going to consider money separate from that. And, and so that's a, it's a little strain, I think, it's a little difficult to figure out exactly how to go. My concern is, my question is, is after we go out and interview from this interview process, do you think we'll actually learn anything about these companies that we don't know? In other words, did they, they gave us, they gave us, we gave them a fair shot, right, to submit all of the stuff they had? Okay, this is our best shot, our best approach. Okay, so now we go interview these guys, do we get any more information as a result of that?
Your honor, we would, we would receive clarification and some information, but I believe their proposal has been submitted, and the selection committee has rated them. And so on, if the top two are within a tenth of one another or a hundredth of one another on that scoring, I think clarification would definitely be need to, definitely need to be made. With the top scorer being 4.32, and then the, the two following are, are really close, if those were the top, I would recommend us shortlisting those and doing an interview to clarify, know the difference between 1.4, one, excuse me, 4.12 and 4.14. But the, the selection committee has evaluated that, they, they did rate what was there, so the information will be clarifying, nothing new though.
Mr. Bailey?
I guess it is a little disconcerting to me also that we're going to make a choice without knowing. I mean, this, this company could come in at $250,000 and everybody else could be at $100,000, and I, and we don't know that, and I'm, I agree that this one stuck out to be the best for me, but without being able to look at a number, I don't know if that's what this additional technology is going to cost us. So I guess to me, can we include, I mean, if, I think we need to look at the price and say, I mean, that would be helpful. I mean, what rules are we going by here that says that we can't look at the price?
That's state of Wyoming statute. My staff has looked, looked into the RFQ process, and it's based off of professional services. And example, if we were to choose a doctor for the city, sometimes you don't want to go with the lowest price for a doctor, want to go with the best one. Same with an attorney, you, you want to base the selection off of how they fit the needs you have for the service. Engineering firms fall within that same professional service, and, and that's why per state statute put out a request for qualification, and fees are considered secondary. And it, I think it's disconcerting to all of us, but the comfort is we're receiving the service we wanted to receive and, um, and, and put out to bid the, the service that we need. We can always negotiate those prices after the flat, after the fact, can't guarantee how that'll go, but it, it's per state statute.
So, so Mr. Betterfield, you get to, once we, once we've picked, then do we get to look at all of the offers and, and make sure that we're, we never, the guys we don't pick, we never see what their bid is?
Your honor, I'm not clear on the technicality of that. I'd have to consult with my staff, that law a little bit better than I do.
Like poker.
I want to be as unbiased as possible.
Uh huh. Mr. Lado, have you got a comment that, that will constructively add to this? Come to the podium, please.
I can't remember what the act is, but it's a federal act with qualifications-based selection, and I, I, the, the name of it's leaving my brain at this moment, but basically what the process is, is you go through like a selection committee like they did, you rate all the firms, you pick who that top firm is, and then what you do is you negotiate on their fee. If you don't like their fee and you can't come to an agreement on that fee, you completely throw that out, go to the next guy, and then you open their fee. You open that, if they're higher than that first guy, he's already off the table, you can't go back to them at that point. But basically, you just keep working your way down the line. That's how federal selection works on a project like for engineering services. Whether it's state statute or not, I'm not 100% sure. It depends on if there's federal funds involved, I think. I applaud staff for making a criteria or qualifications-based selection because I think that's a real necessary thing, even though it's a real big struggle for the people on those committees to, everybody wants to see those fees, but as soon as you open everybody's fee, it all becomes about money. And it doesn't matter if, 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 you know, the lowest guy could be offering to do a windshield, you know, assessment versus a guy going out actually measuring distresses with a wheel versus a company that offers an inspection van with lasers and a Dyna flexion tester for, for subbase compaction. So I guess that, that's the only comment I had on that, so.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we sort of have a motion on the floor here. Okay, we have an amendment to this motion. So the, the, the original motion was that we were going to go with the, um...
IMS.
IMF. I, I lost my, we talked so long, I lost my screen. Okay, so, and then, and then we got that amended to say we were going to do a shortlist and do some interviews, and so we're going to vote on that amendment to do a shortlist and some interviews. So is that, is that, everybody agrees that's where we're at? Okay.
Voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment. Okay, are we gonna, okay, so all those in favor of taking this to a shortlist and interview process, say, say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, mayor votes no. Okay, we're, so that, that amendment fails, so we are on the motion to award this bid or this RFQ to IMS Infrastructure Management. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, motion passes.
Your honor, may I have clarification, because I can't always hear the voices on who voted aye on the amendment?
Voted no on the, no on the amendment was?
I'm, that's the one I missed, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, and on the motion, it was in favor except for Lee. Lee voted against the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to declare a five-minute recess. Uh, yeah, we've got two proclamations. Yeah, there's two proclamations here. Building Safety and Municipal Clerks Week, okay? I'd like to reconvene the, the meeting. There's, there's three items left on the agenda tonight. There's these two proclamations that I'm supposed to read and, and we'll sign, and then we're going to talk about bare-knuckle boxing. So the first proclamation is Building Safety Month. Says whereas the weekly Building Safety Month theme support the overall message, resilient communities start with building codes and/or as founded by the International Code Council, Building Safety Month is celebrated by the jurisdictions worldwide during the month of May, and whereas the Building Safety Month is a public awareness campaign offered each year to help individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create and maintain safe and sustainable structures, and whereas the campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern model building codes, a strong and efficient system of code enforcement, and a well-trained professional workforce to maintain the system, and whereas the city of Riverton has adopted codes for buildings, fire prevention, and energy efficiency to give us confidence that our structures are safe, sound, and to ensure building safety is a critical component for personal and public safety, the protection of property, and our economic well-being, and whereas the Building Safety Month is co-sponsored by the Wyoming Conference of Building Officials and the International Code Council, which promulgates the most widely adopted building safety, fire prevention, and energy codes in the nation, and wants to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings, and whereas the Building Safety Month 2015 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies in protecting life and property. Now therefore, I, John Lars Baker, mayor of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim May of 2015 as Building Safety Month. Okay, and the next one is Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, the time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, John Lars Baker, mayor of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2015, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Courtney V. Bolander, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Dayed at night by my name. And I do thank you Courtney. Okay, the next item is the one that we moved to the tail end tonight and I apologize to all those who wanted, who are here for this. Uh, it's not a, I, we needed a little paperwork uh, taken care of. And so we kind of stuffed you to the end and I really didn't expect that we would talk about a durapatcho for forty-five minutes, but we did. And um, uh, so the, we are going to uh, talk about uh, fighting by arrangement. And we have a report from the chief of police. No?
Your honor, if it's all right, Ms. Bolander will read the title of the ordinances.
Oh, you're gonna, you want to read the title of this first? Okay, that'd be fine.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six and ordinance amending title nine, public peace, morals and welfare. Chapter nine point zero eight offenses against public peace and decency by adding section nine point zero eight point two two zero, fighting by arrangement. Of the Riverton municipal code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are with and providing for an effective date.
Alright. Now are we ready for the chase report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, your honor. So this issue, we won't uh, belabor the, the point that's been before you twice already for discussion. I think everybody probably understands the background, although I'm available to answer any questions you might have for clarification. In a nutshell, we've discovered that it's against federal law for there to be. Fighting matches, boxing matches are regulated at the federal level. Our concern or our issue is that the federal government is reluctant to. To prevent them from happening. The best advice we got from the US Attorney's Office was to allow another event to happen. To charge someone with a crime and present that to them for prosecution. And then they would decide whether that was a good plan to go forward with or not. Um, we, we feel like that's grossly unfair to the participants of that. We believe that by enacting a city ordinance, it would allow us to. Have some manner to prevent those events from happening, uh, and then to have some corrective action should they take place anyway. And so we've come before you with, at your request, a, a proposed ordinance and I'll just read the actual ordinance. This has been vetted by our city attorney, Mr. Rick Solers, as to form and to wording. So fighting by arrangement, sub A, it is misdemeanor for any two or more persons to engage in a fight by mutual agreement. Fighting for purposes of this ordinance shall mean to engage in mutual physical combat that includes, but is not limited to punching and kicking. As well as chokeholds as part of grappling. There are two exceptions listed in the ordinance. Fights that are sanctioned by a commission or board recognized by the statutes of the United States government or the government of the state of Wyoming. And two bouts within a martial arts studio and part of an overall martial arts training regimen. Subsection B is it is a misdemeanor for any person or persons to promote or facilitate a fight between two or more persons. So under this proposed ordinance, it would not outright ban these kind of events that we've been talking about, bare knuckle boxing. Uh, specifically, but it would force a promoter then to get sanctioning from a state recognized body or by a body recognized by the federal law.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your honor, I would move to open public hearing at this time.
Seconded by Mr. Martinez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Pastor Bill Trolinger and this whole thing. Is all about freedom and free enterprise. You know, first Timothy says the love of money is the root all evil. I've been watching these proceedings with great interest and. I was here for the work session when Tim was on the phone testifying. I find it was kind of interesting that he got to testify, yet nobody got to cross-examine him or rebut his testimony. You know, if I wanted to ban poultry in Riverton, Wyoming, I'd call somebody from the national council of beef, or National Cattlemen's Beef Association. You know, boxing's revenues went down eighty percent. When mixed martial arts come on the scene. Tim's paycheck, the guy that everybody in this room was so raptly paying attention to is if he would not lie or, or uh. Mislead in any way for any reason, his paycheck comes from the association of boxing committees, commissions. He gets paid to stop bare knuckle boxing from happening. He wants it to stop happening because he doesn't want his paycheck to go down. Love of money is root all evil. There were some things said at that work session that. I probably know about more about rodeo than anybody in this room. Somebody made the statement that rodeo athletes are trained for years and years and years before they ever get on one. That is a flat out lie. I've helped people get on, I helped a kid from Europe, twenty-five years old, never been on a horse in his life, get down on a bucking horse. But the insinuation is also a lie. Insinuation is that these fighters don't train. I know Creek Robinson's son has been training for five years, trains every day. So the idea that these guys don't know what they're doing is foolish. You know, the safety issue with the boxing, oh, it's safer with boxing gloves. How come high school sports banned the practice of heading the ball in soccer? Because it caused too many concussions. If a ball full of air flying through the air hitting you in the head can cause a concussion, what about a balled up fist and a padded glove? I've watched, I've watched several of these bouts. Their, that, their duration is usually shorter than round in an average glove boxing match. Well, who asked? You know, and, and this gets, this gets to another, you know, it's, it's really easy to step on the minorities' rights. When you have the political power and the financing behind you. You know, every Jim Crow law passed in the South was passed to protect the blacks. You know, you're passing these laws to protect these fighters? Did they ask you to? Is anybody being forced to fight? Is anybody, is anybody being forced to participate or be a spectator in these events? No, they choose to do it. Same reason I chose to ride bucking horses for thirty years. I was passionate about it. I liked what I did. Everybody thought I was nuts. My whole family thinks I'm nuts. They're all team ropers. They think I'm nuts. I rode bucking horse. I could rope as good as anybody in my family, but I'd rather ride bucking horses. These guys want to fight, why are we trying to make it hard on them? I have a feeling that Tim's testimony was based mostly on finances. You know, somebody said something about eighteen year olds shouldn't be allowed to make decisions like this. John Quincy Adams was America's ambassador to the court of Queen Catherine of Russia when he was fourteen years old. But let's talk about that. An eighteen year old kid gets in a boxing ring, gets punched a couple of times, you know, that might hurt him? Eighteen year old steps in a voting booth and votes foolishly, that affects all of us. And I think our last two presidential elections have probably proved that. They're saying eighteen year old can't make decisions? You know, and then somebody said, well, we just got to make it so difficult that nobody will ever do that. That's what King George said prior to seventeen seventy-six. If you, have you ever read the Declaration of Independence? What's that all about? King George made everything for the colonies that were, they were trying to do difficult. Finally, they get tired of it. You know, so the safety issue is off the table. That's bogus. Tim's testimony is purely based on finances. You know, this is about freedom. People want to have the freedom to pursue their pastimes. We're going to regulate safety and every aspect of. Let's get rid of the demolition derby. It's dangerous. People are crashing into car, crashing cars into each other. What about this skate park we're building down here on Main Street? You know, a lot of people get injured riding skateboards. You know, you're going to regulate the, whole world has to be safe and you know, shouldn't that be a personal choice? Back in the eighties, they had an outfit called Abate of Wyoming and they finally pushed and pushed and pushed. And made whether a motorcycle rider wants to ride with a helmet on or not a personal choice. And I think that that's the way it ought to be. I really don't have a dog in this hunt. I'm not a big fan of bare knuckle boxing. I will say it's more exciting than regular boxing. You know, I heard Rush Limbaugh say that Pacquiao Mayweather fight was boring. You know, these things last about two minutes and they're done. And if you've ever been in, in the dressing room with these guys when it's all done. They're hugging on each other, they're laughing, they're joking, they're giving each other a bad time. They're like, they're just like me and my brothers. You know, and I grew up, my brother, we used to have to sit and watch the Lawrence Welk show with my granddad. My granddad grew up bare knuckle boxing. I grew up listening to stories about my granddad's bare knuckle boxing days. And we had to watch the Lawrence Welk show. And according to my granddad, everybody in North Dakota, every farmer had a boxing ring. In his barn. And he said, my granddad said some of the best matches were between his brother and Lawrence Welk. Somebody said this is combative and gladiatorial? I can't think of a more genteel individual than Lawrence Welk. And he competed in bare knuckle boxing. You want to see combative and gladiatorial, ride with my mom during rush hour. That's combative and gladiatorial. You know? The more freedoms we take, sooner or later, they're going to take a freedom you do care, you may not care about bare knuckle boxing. And you may have the political power and the financing to get, get rid of it. But what happens when somebody with the, the financing? And the political power wants to take away something you do care about? See, they've been trying to take away ranching all my life. They've been trying to take away rodeo all my life. Now they're trying to get rid of heterosexual Christian preachers. Sooner or later, they're going to come after something you do care about. Do we really want to be the kind of town that wants to ban these kind of events? Where people are making a free choice? And here's the thing, if this becomes the next big thing like MMA, maybe some of our locals will make a little money. What's wrong with that? And the money that these fighters spend on motel rooms and spend at the Walmart store. When they come to town. You know, I think that ought to be the issue. You know, if these guys want protection, and that's, that brings me to another thing, stock contractors and rodeo. Their animal athletes are rock stars. The one thing you have to have, if you're going to put on a good rodeo is you have to have good stock. The one thing Creek and Corey have to have to put on these events is healthy fighters. There ain't, nobody cares more about the health and safety of these fighters than Creek and Corey, because if they ain't got healthy fighters, they're out of business. Same way with the stock contractors. If they ain't got healthy stock, they're out of business. Why not let the people that know what they're doing? And Corey is, from everything I've talked to Corey, he's done everything he needed to do. According to state statutes to make these legal. He's got letters from the attorney general saying that he was in compliance. He's been to the FBI office and told he was in compliance. With state law. I listened to Tim's testimony. I think I'm the one that caught this. He said, oh yeah, this absolutely falls under the Muhammad Ali act and ought to be regulated by the association of boxing commissions. It ought to be because it's fighting, it's boxing. And then three sentences later, he says, but we don't want to sanction it because it's not boxing. Well, either it is or it isn't. Let's let the, let's let the process, you know, Corey's trying to get a sanctioning body in Wyoming for bare knuckle boxing. American Boxing Association doesn't want that to happen. Or the Association of Boxing Commissions doesn't want that, they do not want another hit on their revenues. Am I the only one that understands that? You know, if it'd be, I want to get rid of Maverick Country Stores and I call Mike Bailey. To testify against Maverick. Mike wouldn't do that. I know Mike. He's an honorable guy. He'd recuse himself from that. But that's what you did. You called somebody from the competitors of Corey and asked him to condemn him. And that's exactly what he did. I say let the guys fight. Thank you.
Is there uh, anybody in the audience that wants to speak on the other side of this issue? Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on the same side of this issue?
My name's Michael Fermay. Uh, I grew up playing hockey and pretty much it's one of the most physical sports out there. And biggest, biggest issue that NHL has had right now is trying to cancel out fighting, pretty much. They tried doing that. Our greatest players go pretty much elsewhere. And pretty much bare knuckle boxing is boxing like a hockey rink and all that and. It's more, I think safer just because you have more referees. They go on your health and all that, like. Your, the Riverton rats went undefeated all, like this year and pretty much saying bare knuckle boxing is no better than hockey and. Like it's pretty much taking hockey away if bare knuckle boxing isn't allowed. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is that it?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We move to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Okay. So uh. I would entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance fifteen zero zero six on first reading.
Your honor.
Mr. Martinez.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six on first reading.
Second.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bailey. I guess I'd just like to make it very clear that this ordinance is not banning sanctioned. Athletic events. Okay, we are stating that you need to go through the proper channels and get the state or the federal government to sanction your events so that they are regulated like any other event would be. And then they're allowed. So I think that's a fair way to do it. Okay, everybody will be on the same playing field. Everybody will know that the. Boxers are getting taken care of the way they're supposed to. They have appropriate medical facilities and people in place and all of those things. And so. You know, we are not against people trying to make a living, trying to do what they like to do. Just want it done. Meet the rules and for us to meet, you know, we can't go against federal regulation, even if they say that they aren't going to enforce it. We can't knowingly go against the regulations. So I would be for this.
Your honor.
Ms. Robian.
I think it's important to, to go along with what Mike said. I think it's important to note that there is nothing. In this requirement that is not already federal law. To which every single person in the city of Riverton is subject. So I. You know, I guess if uh, the promoters feel like the federal law isn't applicable to them, then perhaps this ordinance isn't either, but. I. I don't see where we're adding any, we're, we're not taking any freedom away. We're not doing anything other than saying. Federal law will be followed in the city of Riverton. Whether or not the US Attorney's Office would like to enforce it. And I think the point was made earlier that. You know, their recommendation was during the next event to go arrest people for violating federal law and allow them to be charged. I think this is a much softer hand than that. You know, the, the Association of Boxing Commissions didn't want MMA to get a sanctioning body either. They have one. There are reasonable people in Cheyenne and I think. You know, it just, it has to be done right. The, the safety of the fighter is part of the puzzle, but the. Protection from exploitation is another part of the puzzle and. There, there just, there needs to be a buffer between the guy who is promoting the event and stands to make most of the money from an event. And the people who are being put in harms way to make that money. And every industry is regulated, so. I don't see where this is any different than any other type of business.
Mr. Larson.
It states it is a misdemeanor for any person or persons to promote. What are we, what are we being charged? What would that mean?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Part of the reason for that language, councilman, was that it shouldn't be just a fighter who's on the hook, right? If, if a person stands to make money by pitting two other people against each other. And there's no provision in the law for the person who's setting the whole thing up and profiting the most from it. Uh, it just seems a little bit unreasonable that only the two fighters are the ones that would be um. Facing potential sanctions. So we included the promotion in that to make sure that the people who are, you know, actually. Making the event happen and making money off of it are included in the ordinance wording.
And the Mr. Mayor's fine is?
Yeah, basically it's, it's the same as any other city ordinance, about a hundred and eighty days in jail as a maximum penalty and seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. The judge certainly can find on that scale based on the appropriateness of the judge's decision. Uh, if she was to find guilt, anything up to or less than that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any further? The observation that I see is that in 1986, the Wyoming Legislature disbanded the Wyoming Boxing Commission. And the reason they did it, I believe, was that we had so few matches in the State of Wyoming that it was difficult to justify keeping a boxing commission funded through state government to regulate that. They just said, "This isn't a, this is not a significant industry." And yet, we had a guy go to the legislature a few years ago and convince them that there was an industry associated with, with mixed martial arts. And the legislature established a mixed martial arts commission. And so, that's, that's what we would like to see happen, is that this is formalized in some way, that they, that whatever, we're not, we don't pretend to be experts in this. But what we know is, is the City of Riverton doesn't have the expertise or the, or the resources to, to manage this, to set up our own commission, so to speak. The federal law doesn't even allow the city to do it. What the federal law says is the State of Wyoming can do it and the tribes can do it. But it also says that if you don't have a commission, this kind of stuff is in violation of federal law. So I'm thinking that this is a soft, the best way for us to go is to try to encourage the establishment of that kind of commission, so that if this is, if this is a legitimate sport, and actually does turn out to be something that is economically viable activity, and for everybody that's concerned, and it meets people's needs, there's a way that this can be accomplished. Okay? And if, and if we go through those steps, just like right now, you know, this, this is not, this hasn't blocked mixed martial arts, because they've got a commission, a state commission, that manages it. And so, you know, when Corey was here talking to us, Mr. Williams was here talking to us, that was one of the points that he was making, was that he was trying to get this sanctioned and try to get, try to get it regulated in some way, and in some formal mechanism to manage it. We're saying, if we get that formal mechanism at the state level, then we're fine with it. Any other discussion? So let's read this motion again on first reading. You want it by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is Proposed Ordinance Number 15-006, An Ordinance Amending Title IX Public Peace, Morals and Welfare. Chapter 9.08 Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency. By Adding Section 9.08.220 Fighting By Arrangement. Of the Riverton Municipal Code and Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict therewith and Providing For an Effective Date.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Larson? Is that you?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor votes aye. So, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Did you vote?
I voted no.
You voted no. Okay. So the motion passes on first reading. This will be discussed. We have an opportunity to amend this two more times. So the next time we talk about it, it'll be May the 19th? Okay. Your Honor? Mr. Martinez?
Motion to adjourn.
We got, oh, we get to go through all this.
We got, we got, we got a city administrators' report. Do you have a report to us tonight?
I do, yeah. Just, just a reminder, next week is our budget session, so that's both Tuesday and Wednesday. The first night, we'll go over the main part of the budget, and then Wednesday will be mainly capital, or anything that's carried over from the first meeting. And I know a few of you won't be able to make that, and we can arrange other times that we can meet and discuss those. I'm excited for the Wind River Job Corps. I actually got on that website. They have 63 job openings right now from all, and it's on mctrains.com, mtc-trains.com. And so if you get on there, they have a list of jobs, and I guess apparently they're going for workforce services too, and you can apply through them that way. But that's a great benefit to our community, and excited to see that come about.
And that's it?
That's it. I lost my other notes. I think I had a few other things.
Okay, that's terrific. That's terrific. Okay. So do we have any council committee reports that are, that are burning issues for us? We'd like to. Doesn't sound like, do we've got any council committee reports? The mayor's already commented too much. And so then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn.